I'm sorry, I've got to call tonight's meeting to order. And, um, oh, roll call.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Uh, present remotely.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Attending remotely via teleconference.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
And Erin Murray asked to be excused.
Move to excuse Councilmember Murray.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? She's been excused. Thank you. All right, then the next thing on our agenda is the city manager's report.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council. Several things to mention tonight. First, um, let's see, we had a, uh, new council picture scheduled for this evening. However, with the, uh, the snow and ice and weather, we've rescheduled that, um, to February 1st. So that will be a regular council meeting, uh, first regular council meeting in February. We'll have that, uh, start at 6:00 PM and we'll, uh, have those pictures taken and then we'll get them published and ready to go. Next, we have a, uh, call for artists for music in the park that's going to be coming out soon. And already looking forward to our summer events, even though it's below 30 degrees outside. So we're getting prepared for that. Looking forward to, uh, to those events when they get here. And we have another round of scholarships for residents at the pavilion. Uh, so they can partake in, uh, most activities at the pavilion in our recreation programs. Uh, folks can apply for those shortly. And did want to highlight that earlier this week on the 9th was Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So I wanted to, uh, highlight that and appreciate, uh, our police department and, uh, all police officers across the state and the country. Wanted to also point out that the fountain, you may have noticed, has been turned off. This time we did it on purpose because it's been winterized. Uh, so we're looking forward to that coming back on, uh, in the summer. And we are also on Tuesday of next week, on the 16th, when we come back after the holiday, uh, we'll be putting out a frequently asked questions for folks about our new utility billing program. There's been some questions that pop up and there's a general theme. Wanted to make sure we get that information out to the community, uh, as clearly as we possibly can. So, uh, last two things on my list here are, as you are all aware, on, uh, Monday, at the planning commission meeting, there was a few incidents, uh, of folks disrupting the meeting with hate speech. And the city put out a statement on that, but I wanted to make it very clear that I, neither I nor anybody here at the city nor city council supports or will tolerate anything like that. As we said in our statement, it's cowardly and, um, uh, we are taking steps to make sure that that's mitigated as much as possible. And one of the things I wanted to mention about that was, uh, options for online public comment. We in no way want to discourage folks from coming in here and talking to the city council. Uh, however, that, um, incident is, and it's been replicated in a couple of different cities across the state and, uh, all up and down the west coast, I'm sure other places as well, but those are the incidents I've been following. Uh, and we have two options, uh, in order to address that. First is not allow online public comment. And we would still absolutely encourage people to come in person, uh, to speak with council, uh, but not allow online public comment because that's how most of this has been happening. Um, and like you would expect, they don't turn on their cameras. Uh, you know, they don't want to make the statement, but don't want anybody to know who they really are. Um, which is unsurprising, unfortunately. Um, the second is to offer a pre-registration. Um, so, uh, neighboring cities of ours have done this. They, you sign up for your opportunity to comment online on public meetings, uh, the day before or up to noon on the day of the meeting so that we can make sure that we, uh, verify and know who those folks are going to be when they come to comment online. Uh, or we can leave the policy unchanged and, um, address those items when they happen. Uh, I unfortunately am not optimistic that this will be the last incident. Uh, so I wanted to present those option, uh, options to council. And if you have, uh, preferences, I'd be happy to address the pros and cons or, um, take direction from, uh, from council on that item. So with that, the last thing, several, uh, members of the city council will be unavailable, uh, for your next scheduled meeting on the 18th. And, uh, wanted to, um, mention that this evening and also recommend at this point that we cancel that meeting on the 18th and move those agenda items to the 25th of January, which is the fourth, uh, Thursday of the month of January. The, uh, meeting, uh, on the 25th, uh, should council agree to cancel, uh, cancel the one on the 18th, is going to be very long. So just warn, warn in advance, there's quite a few items on that agenda. Uh, but at this point, um, we want to make sure that you are all aware and we, uh, we don't rush through things in order to get them done on a certain timeline when, uh, nothing is exactly critical at this point. And we can wait until the 25th, but, uh, recommendation at this point is to cancel the 18th.
All right, do we have any questions, comments? Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just so following up. Do we need a motion to officially cancel that meeting?
Yes.
At some point?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Can we do that now?
We can, uh, or council can.
Sure.
All right, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to cancel the meeting scheduled, uh, for February, uh, January 18th. Sorry.
Second.
Any comments? So we can just go on to vote. Uh, all, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm sorry, I should wait a little bit longer for the online people. All opposed? So it's been, um, passed.
Okay.
Thank you. The other was the, um, the Zoom bombing. Um, I, I know that the other cities, um, have the, you sign up ahead of time. I like that one because it gives people a chance to, um, to still be heard and not come in if they have difficulties coming in. Because other than that, they would probably just have to do it in an email form. So, um, anyways, that's just my two cents on that one. Okay, anyone else? Oh, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I was just going to agree, actually, so. Um, I think, I, I like that option of, of being pre-registering. And, so I, if that's the direction we want to go, I'd, I'd like to see us go that way. I do, I, I am, I would be concerned about canceling any comment altogether, I guess. I, I, I think it's important that people have the opportunity to be heard, whether it's, uh, in person or if they aren't available. Uh, and if we're having a public hearing, for instance, on something, um, there's another area where I think we, we really want to hear from people, uh, that are legitimate. So I, I think this is a, to me, that is the best oper, uh, best option of, available.
So that, um, brings up a question. Is, does this cover just public comments or is, um, um, when we're doing, um, oh, public hearing?
Yeah, uh, it would cover both. Um, so if, and we would have a signup sheet similar to what we have here on paper, where you sign up for a particular item and, uh, then we could do that verification. Um, and I also wanted to mention if the, we can try this for a little while, if, if council's comfortable with it. And if it doesn't work, we can try something else. Um, I just want to make sure that every member of our community feels safe and comfortable coming to talk to council. Um, and that, I think, is the goal.
Okay, does anyone have, Councilmember Sonmore?
I just want to ask, um, is it people who just want to call in have to sign up? Or can we leave it, since this is so new, they can also sign up when they come into the meeting?
Yeah, so, uh, people that come into the meeting in person, um, already have the signup sheet at the back of the room that our city clerk grabs right before, um, uh, that item comes up on the agenda or public comments come up. This would only be for online commenter, people wishing to comment online.
Okay, anyone else? Oh, all right.
Okay.
Okay.
Terrific. We'll, uh, I don't believe that we have to modify any of the existing adopted documents, but we're going to double check and verify that. Uh, and we will institute that, uh, that procedure as soon as we take care of all those technicalities.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next is the review of the professional services agreement with Miguel Edwards for the Plaza Art. And we have Donnyo Deo. Oh, no, we're not, we don't have, it looks like it's, um, Jeff Betts.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, councilmembers. Jeff Betts, the Recreation Parks Director for the city. And as mentioned, we're here to review a professional services agreement with Miguel Edwards for the Plaza Art. So that's our purpose. Uh, the agenda for tonight is, we're going to talk a little bit about background, the location of the plaza, the plaza design itself, some conceptual information, the agreement itself, a timeline, and the request of council, as well as any discussion and questions from the council. So, little bit of background first on this project. The project began in 2018 when the city did contract with OTAC for the design of the new pedestrian plaza that is adjacent to light rail, it will be. That design was brought to 90% in 2019 and put on pause for a little while while Sound Transit is able to complete light rail construction. So since then, fast forward October 2022, Sound Transit's been working on it. But in the meantime, uh, the city put out a call for artists for a large-scale visual art piece in the pedestrian plaza. And the scope of work for the project was to clearly define artwork that should contribute to placemaking and also take into consideration the different audiences and community that will engage with the work. So we utilized an online process called CAFE, it's Call for Entry, that we received 30 entries for, and a selection panel narrowed that field down. So a community meeting was held for the four finalists in April of 2022, where they shared their inspiration and also their designs. So that next month in May, the Arts Commission selected Miguel Edwards' sculpture titled Rise Together. And the council did affirm that selection on June 29th, 2023. So after that brief background, the location of the project itself is at the corner of 236th Street Southwest and Van Rye Boulevard. This image you'll see to the right is actually north. I know it seems askew, the way we're looking at it here. Light rail is going, um, from left to right or right to left, whichever way you view it. And in orange there is where that, um, pedestrian plaza would be. It's a little more than the size of the plaza there, but that's the, the general location. So the plaza design includes a 2,000 square foot hardscaped area that includes plantings, benches, a community tree, lighting, and then also a lit city sign that will be facing to the west. The artwork has been installed in the center of the bench area that's depicted here in very small red letters, but hopefully you can see that red line pointing to the middle there. So the agreement itself with the artist, with Miguel Edwards, the scope of the agreement calls for a design, some, uh, base fabrication work, rolled steel tube and lighting and electrical. Design also could include some audio feasible, as well as the transportation installation onsite. The artist will also be having frequent communication at each stage for approval with city staff and the Arts Commission itself. So this slide shows another rendering there from a different angle that was shown previously, I think during the presentations. But the agreement terms for this professional service agreement, that would end on December 31st, 2024. It includes some standard language that we include in our professional service agreements, including indemnification, insurance requirements, as well as some, uh, artist work product and ownership language. And that really is just so that the artwork itself isn't duplicated in another city. So we want to make sure this is a unique piece for Mount Lake Terrace. So the agreement also outlines a payment schedule. It's a $96,000 contract total that's funded by the 1% for the arts program, which in turn is actually derived from the Transit Connection Corps or Project budget, which is 100% grant-funded. So that $24,000 would be initially given to the artist for the preliminary design, a schedule, as well as a list of itemized materials. And then another payment would be forthcoming once the rough sculpture forms are completed of $22,000. And then the final payment of $50,000 would be for the final installation and also acceptance of the project itself. So timeline for this project, the design would begin, we're at a conceptual stage for the design. So the artist needs to, um, actually bring their, uh, different staff involved into, into this and actually look at the design and put it together on paper and, and make sure that everything's going to work. We have a structural engineer he has on staff that would take on some of that. So that would happen in the first and second quarter of this year and then installation would happen towards the end of this year in 2024. So any questions?
All right, do we have any questions?
We have fire breathing out of it like this one.
Is that the same one? No, it's a different one.
I don't get water, can I have fire?
This is interactive. The lights change, right?
Yeah, it is interactive. Uh, the lighting will change depending on where somebody stands and it's a kind of a smart lighting system inside you.
Is that good enough?
No fire.
Can I bring a sprinkler?
All right, Councilmember Woodard.
I don't know that you can answer this. Maybe you can. I don't know that you can answer this, maybe you can. The timeline, it is not predicated on light rail itself opening, right? Because I'm like, I don't know that they're going to be open at that point. As much as we want it to be 2024, so it's, it's a separate from that, right?
Yeah, other than the fact that it, it would be predicated that they're off the site and out of our way for us able to do the work because they, they are in the general area and still doing work. So we need that work to finish before we can do anything else. We're still acquiring the property from WashDOT as well, so that, that process is moving forward to what we're doing design.
But all that should happen by third quarter, by your hope?
Absolutely, should be by the end of this year.
Okay.
All right, anyone else? Councilmember Payne Donovan? Is that a hand that went up?
Yeah, it was, thank you, Mayor. Um, Jeff, I guess my, my question is along similar lines to Councilmember Woodard. You know, the, we're talking about art today, but the, the plaza, um, construction, I'm guessing, you know, is, sort of tracks that as well. What, so I, I guess, to, to make this into a question, sort of, when do we expect, um, you know, the city will, will be able to just, you know, start or, you know, get onto that, that property? Or when will Sound Transit sort of turn that over to, to the city?
Well, I think that, we were just talking about that. Some of that's a little bit out of our hands, right? So I'm making an educated guess on what we, what we think. We think it'll be sometime, um, in the spring that they're able to hand over the site to us. Excuse me. So, uh, we do hope to do construction for that site in summer or fall, if we have to. But we do plan on getting it done this year, is the best I can give you at this time. Uh, we do want the site fully constructed. We obviously have to have the infrastructure in place for the artwork itself. But when we're done, you know, there'd be one of the last things that come in would be the artwork itself to be mounted and displayed and hooked up and those kinds of things.
Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, I guess we're all fine with this. Thank you very much.
Right.
And you're next again?
No, just, uh, just to mention that, uh, this would come forward at the next council meeting. So I wasn't sure when that was going to be since we were canceling that, but, um, so this would be, uh, ready for consent, if that's what council's wishes were, to be on the next council meeting.
Are we going to have a consent calendar on the 25th? Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you're up here again for the review of the Recreation Conservation Office, RCO agreement for the local parks maintenance grant.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and councilmembers. Don Aldio, Parks Project Manager. We are here tonight to talk about, uh, the local maintenance and grant agreement with the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office. Um, the city was awarded funds by this new program to support refurbishment or refreshment of the city's, uh, outdoor basketball court located at the Recreation Pavilion. So tonight we'll talk a little bit about background, the new funding opportunity, the work that we plan to complete, schedule, um, the funding award, and give you a request for council and discuss any questions that you may have. Uh, to give a little bit of background, uh, it's, like I said, it was, it's located at the Recreation Pavilion. Um, it's approximately 7,350 square feet. It has six basketball rims and backboards, uh, a seating area, and is all enclosed currently with, uh, chain link fencing and gates. Um, the outdoor basketball court, uh, was originally built in the late 1980s with funding from the NBA's Seattle Supersonics and Metropolitan Life. Um, that was one thing that we, uh, mentioned and is mentioned as a part of the grant and is kind of what, how staff, uh, recognize the court by the Sonics Court. Uh, and like I said, this is a new funding opportunity from RCO, um, using operating dollars. It's a one-time funding opportunity to assist, uh, parks departments with maintenance of their facilities. Uh, there's $5 million available and it's being spread across two fiscal years for 2024 and 2025. Um, again, the intent is to focus on helping departments with their backlogs of maintenance, um, any deferred maintenance, repairs, upkeep, or partial replacements. Routine maintenance was not eligible, nor were any improvements. Um, there was approximately a little over 200 applicants from all over the state. Uh, the minimum ask was 35,000, up to a maximum of $100,000, and there was no match requirement. So applications were submitted in September. Uh, it was a quick turnaround. They did evaluations and published awards just this past November. Um, based on the grant criteria, the city decided to apply for, uh, maintenance activities at the basketball court. We applied for $94,190 to refresh the outdoor basketball courts, uh, or outdoor basketball court. Um, and with that money, we will, we plan to, uh, complete the crack repair, fill any depressions, um, resurface the court, replace the exterior fencing and the backboards and rims and nets. So like I said, this money is spread across two fiscal years. The fiscal years end June 30th. Um, so this first agreement, or this, the agreement tonight is for, um, $13,300. And that will give us initial funds to purchase the rims, backboards, and net. Um, we split the funding across both the fiscal years due to weather. Um, after Ju- July 1st is typically better weather for the resurfacing. Um, so the bulk of the monies for the grant will be, um, acquired through a future amendment where we'll utilize those funds to do the court resurfacing and repair and the fencing and gates. Here's a breakdown of the funding. Total again was $94,190, uh, broken out into equipment, uh, court resurfacing, and then fencing. And with that, since you, the, it looks like the 18th is canceled. Um, I just, the staff is recommending that the next council meeting, um, authorize the city manager to execute the local parks and maintenance grant agreement with RCO, um, substantially in the same format with the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office. And with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, are there any questions? Comments? Councilmember Woodard?
A comment and maybe a question after that. Uh, really just comment, thank you for the work. I mean, that's outstanding that we're at a point where we get almost $100,000 grants and it's kind of say in, $94,190. You know, it's like, oh my gosh, awesome, thank you for that, especially on these very quick turnarounds. Um, really speaks to your professionalism and your craft. So just wanted to say thank you as a person who's never used a Sonics Court, but know a lot of people who use it. They should be very grateful for the work that you've all done because I don't think we had this in our budget. Um, and so just wanted to make sure that part was clear. And then maybe the question will be, and mostly because I just can't get over the cost of anything these days, but I'm looking at this going, $13,000 for a backboard, a rim, and a net? Does it come with the pole? I mean, anyway, so I guess I was just like, that's just the going rate, right? I mean, just wanted to say, somebody said something, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Times, times six, there's six on the court, so yeah.
Okay, it's not like they're gold race or something. That's just, that's just amazing to me, but the resurfacing is absurd. So it's like, okay, I accept it, but wow. But again, thank you is the main message for the work. And again, just, especially when it's a short turnaround, that, that's amazing.
So is the name still going to have Sonics on there, in there somewhere? Because that's the only way I can recognize. Anyone else out there? Nope. Oh, I'm sorry, right next to me, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I actually wasn't going to say anything, but, uh, I will follow up on Councilmember Woodard's, uh, comments. First of all, thank you, absolutely, it's great work. We're really thrilled that we're able to move forward with this. But yeah, the, the costs, I had the same, look, uh, gate or the fencing, $30,000. Um, I hope we're getting something other than chain link fence for 30,000. 30,000, you gotta be kidding me.
Are they tight, 10, I was trying to think of the height too. They're 10 or 12, yeah.
It's also metal.
Aye.
And it's a 70 by 105, so I mean, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't see anyone else, uh, out there on Zoom, uh, with their hands up, so. Any other questions before, excuse me, before we let them go? All right, thank you so much. Okay, so next is the review of the amendments of the Fire, Fire Code Official Chapter, MTMC 15.10, uh, with, uh, our Community and Economic Development Director, Kristi Osborne. No, I guess not. I'm just reading this, not looking up. No.
Let me get this set up and then we'll get started. Mayor, Mayor Protemp, and council members, my name is Matthew Gisso. I'm your building official for the City of Mountain Lake Terrace. I'm here today to propose a couple of changes to our municipal code, Chapter 1510, which specifically is our fire code. Has come to my attention, there are some things that are not consistent with our already adopted international fire code. So we thought it'd be prudent to resolve some of those issues as well as change some of the language to make sure that the power of instituting this code stays with council through the city manager's office. So I thought it'd just be, quickest way to do this was kind of go through it. Basically, the biggest changes in it is we're referred to in a lot of areas, the fire marshal. The fire code does not mention the fire marshal anywhere in it. It mentions the fire code official. So most of the changes are changing from fire marshal to fire code official. There's also other minor changes in positions that have changed within the city. The Engineering Service Director is no longer positioned in the City of Mountain Lake Terrace. It's now just the city engineer, so that has been resolved as well as a few of our definitions have changed. And we removed some language that had redundancies in our code. So some of the definitions didn't work what we were trying to utilize because it pointed to Chief Appointing Authority as the fire chief. We want to make sure that the power to interpret, utilize this code stays within the City of Mountain Lake Terrace. So we have changed that code language that the Chief Appointing Authority uses an international fire code. It shall meet the Mountain Lake Terrace City Manager or their designee. So that gives council the opportunity to still make changes as they see fit to best serve the city. Yes?
Just a quick, I mean, sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just real quickly, while we're on that specific section, we have a typo there. I don't want to make a big deal out of it, but just correct it when we officially adopt it.
Yeah.
Their, their designee. G-H-E-I-R.
Ahah.
Otherwise, it looks great.
Nope. Words matter. That's why we're in codes. So, thank you. There's also a chapter in this code that allowed the fire marshal to just make any changes they wanted in the field. We wanted to make sure there's consistency in our code and consistency in the expectation that applicants know that when we do a plan review and we go through the process that that decision will be maintained throughout the project. So we've removed that language and there's specific language in the international fire code that allows you to have alternates if needed. So we don't need that language in our code anymore. Besides that, it's, the rest of it's pretty much just changing fire marshal to fire code official. So some minor changes just to make it reflect our new code and make sure that the power to utilize this code stays within the City of Mountain Lake Terrace in the future.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions, input? I don't see any up there. Okay. Well, we're cleaning up things here and there. That's good.
All right. So our next step would be, there'll be a public hearing on the 25th where we'll have our opportunity to go through it. I'll double check all the spelling to make sure it's accurate. And we'll be able to follow it up then.
Great, thank you. Okay, so next. Thank you very much. Next is the review of the Addendum 5 for Edmonds Wastewater Treatment Plant Agreement. And this time it is Jesse Hoffman.
Well, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council, thank you for having me. So I'm going to put my glasses on because I made a bunch of chicken scratch notes. This one's a little, it's not that complicated, but I figured I would give you a bunch of background information because of the dollar value of what we're talking about on an annual basis. The first agreement with the Edmonds Wastewater Treatment Plant was signed in May of 1988 for 30 years. The original partners were Mountain Lake Terrace, Edmonds, Olympic View Water, and Sewer District and the Ronald Sewer District. It's been amended four times previously without change to the agreement except extending the length of the agreement. The first was on May 2017, the second on April 2020, 2020, the third on August 2020, and the fourth on March of 2022. In April of 2021, Shoreline assumed control of the Ronald Sewer District and replaced them as a partner in this agreement. This amendment extends the agreement to February 17, 2026, but otherwise keeps the terms of the agreement the same. Mountain Lake Terrace is responsible for 23.174% of capital charges, for our percentage of, excuse me, of capital charges for the Edmonds Wastewater Treatment Plant. We're also responsible for maintenance and operation charges plus 10% of overhead. The way that works is that they take the total flow for the year into the plant and then our percentage of usage is the percentage of the total maintenance and operation costs that we pay plus overhead. Why that's important, I'll give you an approximate comparison between what we pay to the Edmonds Wastewater Treatment Plant and what we pay through Shoreline to the King County Metro Sewer System. So we're paying per equivalent single-family residential unit, $16.17 per from Edmonds Wastewater Treatment Plant as compared to $62.96 to the King County system. So it's a significant difference in the cost to do that. And the bulk of our wastewater does move into the Edmonds Wastewater Treatment Plant. So monthly, at this point, and this changed, I think, April of this last year, we are paying $147,833.20. The annual tab at that rate that it'll be, unless there's a true-up in the following April of 2025, will be $1,773,998.40. There is an oversight committee for the partners at the Edmonds Wastewater Treatment Plant with all partners having one vote. These positions are held by the Public Works Directors and Operation Managers depending on who gets sent from each of the partners. So the ask of the council is that at the meeting on the 25th, that this be placed on the consent calendar and that we sign, or that the council authorizes the city manager to sign the Amendment Number 5 to the Edmonds Wastewater Treatment Plant Agreement. Are there any questions?
On Zoom, do we have anybody? Councilmember Sawmore?
Jesse, could you go over what we pay right now and what we're going to be paying next year? What is the cost difference and how much is it going up?
So the comparison that I used with King County, the first thing I have to say is there's no capital included in that. So we're responsible for our portion of capital charges to the Edmonds Wastewater Treatment Plant at 23.174%. So the numbers that I'm using do not include that. What we paid originally this year, I think, and I should have this number. I can, I can get the number for you until April was, I want to say it was $109,000 a month and change. If you want the full number, I can, I can dig that up for you. In April, they trued us up for the flow that we had in 2022 because maintenance and operations is based on your percentage, your partner percentage total flow into the plant compared to 100% of the maintenance charges. So in the year 2024, if there are no changes to our monthly payments of $147,833.20, we will have paid by the end of the year $1,773,998, excuse me, $177,3998.40. Did that answer your question, Councilmember Sawmore?
Could I just ask, from a budget standpoint, so if we're going to pay that $1.7 million in 2024, what was our amount in 2023? I'm just trying to figure out how much it's gone up.
I would have to get that number for you. It went up about $30,000 a month roughly, but I can get that number for you.
Thank you. There, I'm sorry, was $30,000 a month?
More a month, roughly, but I'd, I'd like to get an actual number for you in response to that. It's somewhere around there though.
Oh, sorry, Jesse, go ahead.
I, I'd like to get you an actual number. It was somewhere, from my recollection, it was about $30,000 more a month. So times 12 for the year, it took us up to $147,833.20 a month.
So that leads me to my next question. How will each resident household be affected by this increase? Because you had mentioned the $16.17 and then also the Seattle rate. So as a homeowner, how much can they see an increase in their bill?
So that's not quite how we're doing it. We are paying our maintenance and operations fees portion to the plant plus the overhead, 10% overhead that we pay as for our partnership of it. And then we gauge our own system and what's happening with our sewer system, what our needs are internally within the City of Mountain Lake Terrace for maintenance and operations plus capital projects that are moving forward. So it is a factor in the total, in the total equation, but it's, it's one of many factors that go into the rates that the, that the residents pay. Does, does.
It's just, yeah, it's a very catchy subject, as you know, because it's all one bill. And that's why council always likes to know if the customers are going to see increase because they're already talking about increase in water bill. And so we just need to be aware of all the different costs that are going on.
So there is a rate study going on for all three of our utilities right now that will take that into consideration in our overall system internally in Mountain Lake Terrace as well as the pricing for what we're paying for wastewater treatment, both in Edmonds, in the wastewater treatment plant there, and for the King County Metro system through the Shoreline, through the City of Shoreline. And that will be a factor in the rate determination that will be presented to council, I believe in October. Is when we're planning to bring it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is that sewer that goes through Shoreline to King County, is that part of the sewer capacity charge that new constructions have to pay? And is it true that Mountain Lake Terrace does not charge that?
So I believe we do charge capital facility charges on the sewer system, the water system, and the stormwater system. We, we charge for all of our utilities for new development. And once again, that would be one factor, the capital facilities charges, just like the rates that both commercial, industrial, and residential residents of Mountain Lake Terrace pay are all part of this rate study. And then the determination is made of what kind of capital, capital facilities charges we should be charging as well as what residential customers are getting charged and what commercial and industrial customers are getting charged.
The sewer capacity charge, though, is a separate thing when you, when you buy new construction. And, and they charge you on a different bill, on a different cycle. And apparently, realtors, real estate brokers are not letting their clients know anymore. But I was told that in Mountain Lake Terrace, we don't charge that. So I would like to make sure that I'm seeing the correct thing.
Okay, so I can, I can look that up. As far as I know, there is nothing in our code that's specifically called a sewer capacity charge. So maybe we don't, maybe we don't have one. We have a capital facilities charge. So let's say you redevelop an area. The, the city's going to look at what you're redeveloping, how big it is, how much you are going to use the system, and then a charge will be made by the city engineer will determine how much should be paid into the overall system to upgrade the area around you to deal with an upsizing, if that's what's happening, of the sewer system in that area to handle that.
But this goes directly, this goes into King County?
To, oh, to King County, yeah.
Because the King County charges this.
Okay, so as far as I know, the only bills that I sign going to King County are, are for residential, single-family residential units, and there's not many. In fact, I have a list here.
And they're not just new construction?
No, we're paying them not at the rates that a residential rate payer would pay for King County, but through Shoreline's partnership agreement plus the overhead Shoreline's charging us. So I don't think we are being directly affected by that, but I will look into it for you.
Okay, well, it's, if, if we really don't charge it, I'd like the world to know that we don't charge it.
Sure, okay. No problem. So we do charge a capital facilities charge.
Well, that's different.
The mayor's talking about a sewer capacity charge. Yeah, which I've never seen in our code.
All right, thank you.
So if, if you're agreeable to signing Amendment Number 5 to this agreement, it'll hopefully be up on the consent calendar at your next regular meeting, which I believe is the 25th.
Is that a thumbs up or a hands up?
It's a hands up. I just have one additional question. Jesse, as we're looking at the, is there any room for negotiations? Or, or is this is what it is? And are we getting the same comparable increases as other cities? I know that we only do a certain percentage for the City of Mountain Lake Terrace, but and there's a committee that comes up, did you say at the very beginning, just to recapture what you said?
Okay, so to answer those questions, the first, I'll deal with the second, which is that there is a committee and I sit on it along with the general manager for the Olympic View Sewer and Water District. He's the operations manager for the Shoreline Sewer District and the operations manager for Edmonds Wastewater Treatment Plant. I think I caught everybody there. That's all the partners, right? Yeah. So we sit on that and then we're able to review the budget. They send the budget out to us. We discuss it. Any capital projects that are brought up are discussed by that committee. If that answers the question, then we vote on, on it. And we, we get to look over any invoices that are sent for this stuff. So it's, it's an oversight committee, like it's called. We just, we watch everything that's happening. That meets quarterly. So could you repeat the first question again? I'm sorry, Councilmember.
So it's, it's not like you have a rate study, right? It's just this, the committee that's reviewing it. Because what I'm trying to understand is, how do we know if we're being charged the right amount? And is everybody getting equal increase? And is, or is it based on projects? I guess I'm always looking for, is there any room for negotiation? Or it doesn't sound like if it's based on a committee that you would just figure out the costs that need to be provided in order to operate the facilities and our wastewater.
That's, that's a great question. So there's two ways that charges are happening from the Edmonds, and this is not for King County Metro via Shoreline, but for the Edmonds Wastewater Treatment Plant. The, the first category would be capital projects. For instance, there's been a biochar project that's been going on there that takes the sludge from the plant and burns that sludge of which we, we paid our portion of. So under the initial agreement, which is still standing from 1988, we pay 23.174, I believe, hold on, yeah, 23.174% of those capital charges. So that's how capital charges are handled. That it goes all the way back to 1988 and that without any change, that agreement has continued on since that time. And here we're at hopefully the fifth agreement getting extended. That extend, extension for another two years of the Fifth Amendment here. So maintenance and operations is handled differently. Maintenance and operations, they figure out what the maintenance and operations budget is for the plant as a whole. And then the flow of each partner is calculated, how much you are moving into that plant. And that percentage of the flow that's moving into the plant is the percentage of the total maintenance and operations budget that you as a partner pay. So it isn't necessarily 23.174%. Let's say we flowed 29 or 30% from our system into the Edmonds Wastewater Treatment Plant. Our maintenance and operations fee would be based on 29 or 30% of what the total cost of maintenance and operations would be to match our flow into the plant. Plus, they're charging us 10% overhead, us and all the partners. So it's equal across the board. So is there room for negotiation? So it's equal across the board. So um is there room for negotiation? I think that the other partners are very eager to renegotiate this agreement. And at that time, um, everybody's going to be looking at how much flow is going in from each of the partners because of the percentage of the capital that's getting paid, and so hmm, all of the partners are interested in truing up that number, especially Olympic Olympic and Shoreline, because they feel like they're paying, you know, a certain portion of that that maybe they necessarily should be handed to Mount Lake Terrace or Edmonds at this point. So I think there will be a negotiation. I'm just not sure that.
And Jesse, is this just for twenty twenty-four? Because um just looking at at this and hearing that, um, maybe we don't want to negotiate, but um uh, so is this just for twenty twenty-four?
Um, this will extend us through February seventeenth of twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six. Oh, that's exact, okay, sorry about that. Thank you. That's exactly.
I would say, though, you know, if you take the capital aside and you look at, we had our um utility engineer run the numbers on this. If you look at what we're paying compared to what we're paying at King County Metro, we have a fantastic relationship with the other partners. You know, um, I think that we should walk into this with a with an open open heart, look at what the values are in in, you know, twenty twenty-five when we go to negotiate for twenty twenty-six and um do a a deal that's good for everybody, because this is so much cheaper than if we have to go into into the King County system, right? So, you know, just throw that out there.
Councilor Woodard.
Thank you for your report, and I'm hoping you can help me on this one, and really it's a heads up for Councilmember Payne Donovan. I'd I had heard this conversation through the Lake Ballenger Forum, and that's actually why we're pulling back a little bit and saying, let's let the I L L lapse so we can address these types of issues, which is just my way of saying, I think this conversation is happening amongst the cities in that forum, uh, which is, again, a heads up for our council liaison. It was just starting to make its way to the shores, if you will. Um, but you could see, I think that that was elements of why we let the I L A lapse. Is that fair to say?
For the Lake Ballenger Forum?
Yes.
Um, you know, I if I can bag that out of that one and talk to Laura Reed before I respond to that, because she's really leading the charge on the Lake Lake Ballenger Forum. Is that okay?
Yeah, and I'm really, I'm just saying where we can track this conversation. It seems like it's happening in that whatever it's
For wastewater, um, that's stormwater. So that's a separate utility. La- Lake Ballenger is, this is um uh, our sewer system.
Okay.
So it's a different system. It does move through that area and go to a pump station and head to Edmonds from there. Are we on the same?
We are, and I guess I'm like, yes, and what I'm saying is we're no longer the Lake Ballenger Forum, and so this conversation will now take place in whatever they rename that forum. And that was, in essence, not the only reason, but one of the reasons, because clearly, as you said, well, you cut through the area, but we were never talking about you. You know what I mean? And so now this does allow that forum to have these conversations. So I would say still check in with uh Laura. Bless you, yeah, you know, I'd still say check in with her, but I would say this was what this, too, again, Councilmember Payne Donovan, this was, in essence, why I stepped back a little bit, because it's like, I think you start getting into much bigger conversations. Uh, and I'm just saying, I think that that's a space where that might start taking place, where it wasn't before. And I'm saying now, I think the way they're reconstituting, you might find this conversation there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll check in with Laura about it.
That's what I'm trying to say. It seems like that's what they're trying to do.
Anyone else? Okay. I guess this will. Yeah, in two weeks, it'll be on the consent calendar. Thank you. Okay, so are you next to with the review of the Snohomish County loan for Safe Routes to School Project?
Yes. Okay, so to give you a little background, the Safe Routes to School Project is um at two sixteenth and forty-eighth and has been planned for some time. The total budget for that project is now up to approximately one point two million dollars. And um we have an ARPA grant that the city council was kind enough to give to us for two hundred thousand dollars, and we also have a Wash dot S Safe Routes to School Grant in the amount of, sorry, I printed this, uh, uh, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars. So um we would like to take our local money and take a a public assistance loan from the county at one point five percent interest to cover the look local fund so that we can stretch our liquid capital upfront and space it over over twenty years. Um, the annual installment payments will be thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents, of which storm the stormwater utility will be responsible for twelve point three seven percent. The water utility will be responsible for forty-nine point four seven percent. The street u- utility or street construction will be responsible for thirty-eight point one six percent, and we can pay it off early if we want to.
And um any questions before I ask mine? And, oh, uh, Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Jesse, I guess I um just want to express my uh, interests and support and surprise at at that interest rate. And I've known about this um this fund at the county and and I know a bit of history on on its its founding, but um that seems like an awful good deal. So um I don't know if you have, you find a question in there, but um, would you agree?
I, yes, I'm I'm going to agree wholeheartedly with the, I wish that my house had a one point five percent interest rate on it, so.
Anyone else? So the price tag went up quite a bit. So are we still going to be able to finish off that one section of um of of sidewalk? That that corner, because that is, uh, they're going to have to build a retaining wall. And I hate to see a retaining wall end halfway through. And then how and later on, the homeowner is going to have to finish it off. It will never get finished off. And so if the if that section can get that retaining wall in all the way to the end.
So the answer is the sidewalk will be extended. Uh, the intersection will be completely rebuilt. In fact, we're lifting it by a foot uh, in order to make all of this work. Um, new storm systems, we're actually adding a twelve-inch, twelve or twenty-four, I'm sorry, we're we're adding a new water distribution line up that will is for future development through the intersection so that we don't have to dig the intersection up again. Um, there will be RRFBs or, I think they're called rectangle? Rapid flashing beacons, rectangular rapid flashing beacons. I don't know why they say rectangular in there, but um and um radar signs for driver's feedback. So they don't actually have any um anything, but when you're driving, you'll be able to see how fast you're going, and hopefully people will help to monitor their speeds as they're moving through the area. Right, but you can't get a ticket for for those. That's, I guess, my point, is that they're not an enforceable device.
We have so many uh accidents um on that um intersection. I'm, uh, so when you when you raise the it up a foot, and then you're you're probably going to get rid of all these vegetation on the on both sides. But because the vegetation is what is making it hard to see. And I don't, and does the person on on this other side with his big laurel fence, do they know that we're going to be working on it and they might have to lose their fence?
So um there was, we thought that we would have two um property owners that we would have to enter into temporary construction easements with. It ended up being one, and we will be removing a lot of blackberry bramble and replacing that blackberry bramble with a fence for that property owner. Um, if that answers your question.
That would be that one corner. So, but that's an important one.
Yeah, so it's a full makeover of the whole intersection, is the
As long as it just will cause less be safer uh, and have less accidents there, that would really, really help. In- increased visibility, because they can't see. That's why they're inching out further and further, right? And sometimes not even stopping.
Well, for the price that we're paying, I'm going to go tomorrow morning and talk to our engineer and make absolutely sure that we are increasing our visibility that intersection. I I know that the price went up significantly, uh, but I think we're doing everything that we can possibly do in that one spot. I, what we're trying to concentrate on now is um complete streets. It's so expensive. Once you open a street, then when we're going in whenever possible, we're doing everything we can in that spot, and I think that's how we are going to uh, effectively stretch the budget that we have as a city as a city of our size is to make sure that we're doing what we can, where we can, and not going back to that area again unless we absolutely have to.
Good, well, that's only makes common sense. All right, anyone else? Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. I guess I'll take a a moment just to um sort of speak to the the need for, you know, I I I won't beat up on on Jesse, because I know um you and staff are aware, you know, dating back to my time on on the planning commission about this project that you know, I I think complete streets really need to sort of center the the vulnerable road user here, but I hopefully somebody walk into school. Um, and, you know, I think this is a would be a have been an important place to put a stop sign, but also you know, thinking about that, that corridor and access to the high school, you know, um, I've heard from a lot of residents about concern about students getting safely to the high school, and since this isn't too far from from forty-fourth, and and as we think about you know, how our our neighbor students get to um the classroom, um just uh want to state that I hope we can get more safer routes to schools programs and and look at you know, the access for pedestrians and, you know, bicyclists and 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 drivers, for that matter, um, in a safe manner to the high school, because I've been hearing a lot about that that lately. So um, good work and and just wanted to take the opportunity to um, you know, plug more sort of pedestrian and and, you know, student-focused projects like this.
Thank you, Councilmember Sonmore.
So this has been a huge project. Um, I met with the neighbors. They came over to my house a few years ago. Um, and that's why a lot of us have been very interested. It's a horrible intersection with the bamboo growing up and the steep um embankment on that one side of the house. Um, can I ask that we, when we were originally doing this project, and I'm I'm saddened that it hadn't been done previously, because we we had kind of promised those neighbors that we would get it done, so ensuring this loan, um I'm just repeating back, will negate the fact that we will get this done, and this will help us get it done. Um, when we originally talked about it many years ago, we talked about combining all the sidewalks on forty-eighth there. So are we going to be doing anything with the sidewalks down a little bit farther, just so when children are walking to school on forty-eighth, they always have a sidewalk to walk on? Is that um any part of this project at all, if you could refresh my memory?
Yes, we will be completing the gaps in the sidewalk in that area. So as uh the council's aware, we have a lot of areas in town that don't have sidewalks or have partial sidewalks. So I don't want to go too far with that. I think we're going about, I think it's half a block down or something. There's a missing sidewalk there, and there may be another chunk of sidewalk that we're adding in a space to 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 complete the area, but um without looking at Google Maps and seeing exactly what's past that, I'll leave it that in the area of the intersection, the sidewalks will be left complete with this project.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And just in case they want to listen to this, they can hear this, and um, you know, it's the roadway in front of the where the former mayor's house used to be that got moved into one of the cul-de-sacs that has been um uh, people are interested in knowing more about that one, but it's also just making sure that some of that connection, we kind of get more bang for our buck. Not only are we fixing that intersection, but we're making those sidewalks safer on forty-eight. So, thank you.
All right. I don't see any other hands going up. Thank you very much.
Bet, so I believe this will be on the consent calendar for the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. Thank you. Okay, so next is the review of the professional services agreement with the Johnson Group with our city manager, Jeff Knighton.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of council. So uh, for a number of years now, the city of Mount Lake Terrace has contracted with the Johnson Group to provide lobbying services, federal lobbying services, uh, as part of the city council's strategy to secure federal funds for projects such as Main Street and Ballenger Park. And last November, uh, Mr. Johnson attended the city council meeting to provide a legislative update for all of you for what we were looking forward to in twenty twenty-four. And some highlights from that were a resubmital of the RACE grant to the U.S. Department of Transportation and uh several other things, including um work in Ballenger Park during the next Water Resources Development Act discussions, and reviewing grant opportunities and to support city applications for those um those uh revenue options. So uh, another part is uh enabling the delegation meetings in Washington, D.C. and here in Mount Lake Terrace. And some highlights or some changes to this agreement from what you've seen previously is this agreement contemplates a two-year agreement, so it would be for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Twenty twenty-four, the rates uh with Mr. Johnson stay the same, and in twenty twenty-five, there is an increase included of five percent. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? I don't see any hands. So I guess we're, we think he's doing a good job.
Excellent.
Go ahead, um, Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Protem, well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I I'll just comment that he does do a great job. We all know it. I guess it's it's kind of um, uh, doesn't hardly need to be said within council, but for the public, um, uh, the Johnson Group, Jake does a fantastic job for us, representing us, working with us, um bringing bringing the bacon home, bringing uh working working with the delegation to help ensure they know what our needs are and uh, and and working through the process to be able to get the get the dollars we need to be able to uh complete projects. Done, we've done very well through him for many years, and we look forward to continuing to do that work with him together uh, and being successful on things like the RACE grant. Thank you.
And before we move on, Miss uh Mayor, I would like to request a five-minute break before we move to the next section.
All right, so that'd be right now?
Please.
Um, will we back by eight? Twelve?
Eight, twelve, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Now we can start. All right. Well, first of all, before we continue, the city manager has a statement to make.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of council and members of the public. Just wanted to make clear that under section eight point zero seven C of the general and public comment guidelines adopted as part of the protocol manual, city council protocol manual, no person shall make personal attacks or threatening remarks while addressing the council, which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the council meeting. Any person who is engaging in conduct that disturbs, disrupts, or impedes the business of the council or whose comments have been ruled out of order by the presiding officer shall immediately cease and refrain from further improper comments or inappropriate conduct. And I also do want to make it clear that hate speech is uh is construed as a threat. So with that, we can go ahead and open public comment.
All right, do we have any public comments?
No one has signed up in person. If there's anyone in the online audience who would like to make a comment, please use a hand raised tool.
All right, so we'll move on to the re- review of the next meeting agenda, which is canceled, so the next meeting will be the twenty-fifth?
January twenty-fifth, correct.
I don't have the agenda prepared fully yet, so.
All right. Okay, then we'll then we'll move on to council comments. Does anyone, let's start with Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. I I wanted to share that I received yesterday, I think that was yesterday, uh, a proclamation from the county council, actually, the county executive's office, where they did a proclamation recognizing MLK specifically and MLK Weekend. Um, I did submit that, I think I forwarded that to you all, so just to know that, I think somewhere in the ether, you'll see there's a proclamation um from the county. And just wanted to acknowledge, I hope everyone has, especially in light of how this uh conversation
I hope everyone has, especially in light of how this conversation took a turn, I hope that everybody actually uses this weekend to really reflect on humanity and their place in it.
Thank you. Do I see anyone else? Wow, we have a short council comment tonight. Oh, no, there's a Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Mary. I just want to say thank you to the city manager for handling those hateful comments so well. So appreciate you for preparing us. And I just want to express my disappointment that those remarks were brought to this forum. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I guess not. Okay. Oh, next is adjournment. We're going to go on to adjournment. Thank you. We're adjourned.